Good afternoon. This meeting of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees is now called to order at 4:32 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 on the agenda. We will ask at each item if there is public comment, and all presenters should remain muted with their video off until it is time to make your presentation. And I believe, Catherine, you said something earlier that you were going to put something in about how to do it if you were on the phone, how to raise your hand.
Yes, I did add that. Star nine to raise your hand, star six to speak. But we have no... Oh, we do have one.
Okay. Well, we'll get there when we get there. Can you do roll call for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Trustee God.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Student trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Baldini is not present. And trustee Baker.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Trustee Goff, would you like to lead us?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So 2.3 is adoption of the agenda. If we do not have any proposed changes, I believe we can do this by consensus. Does anyone have any changes that they would like us to make? Okay, hearing none. The agenda is adopted by consensus. So now we are ready for public comment on closed session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any closed session comments?
I have not received any comments.
Nobody's hands are being raised?
No.
Okay. Then at this time, the board will move into closed session, and we should return approximately 4... Sorry, 5:30 PM. The items on our agenda for closed session are conference with real property negotiators and public employee evaluation. So we will see you again at approximately 5:30.
Trustee Baker, that should be... 4.2 should be conference with labor negotiators. I think that it's incorrect.
You are correct. I was wrong. So yes, so conference with labor negotiators is our second item. Thank you. So we will see you back at 5:30. According to my phone, it is 5:30 PM. So we're calling our public session back to order, returning from closed session. We have no items to report from closed session. So our next item is public comment for general items. So this public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act by definition. This is an opportunity to be... to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an item, agenda... that agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the board place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. And no action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am. I see no public comment, and I have received no emails.
Okay. Then I believe we can close public comment and move on to Item 7.1, which is contract with the County of Napa to provide support for redistricting of trustee areas required as a result of the 2020 federal census. And Mr. Parker is, I believe, going to start us off with this item. And we have a guest, John Tudor here also from the Napa County Office of Elections.
Trustee Baker, I do not see that Mr. Tudor has arrived yet.
Oh.
So we should probably go on and look back to him when he arrives.
We can do that then. So that would take us into reports. So 8.1, we have Dr. Eileen Tahada, Academic Senate Report. Is she with us?
I'm sorry, I do not see her in the list. Let me look over here. No, I do not see her in the list.
All righty. Then do we have Administrative Confidential Senate Report from Robert Harris?
I just moved him in. Let's see. There he is.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, my lighting is real funky, so... Looks like I have an antique lighting cluster going here. So anyway, good evening, board and guests. On behalf of the Administrative Senate, our group is working very diligently with faculty and other members of the campus community in our writing teams and the accreditation process. Many of us are leading groups or are key players in gathering information and preparing to write. So that's been going on. Also, as members of our senate have been coming back on campus on a regular basis to attend to the business at hand on a regular basis, the senate will be polling or surveying all of our members regarding feeling... get their feelings for how they feel returning to campus in the next several months and the planning for the fall semester, et cetera. We have a busy, busy spring semester, as does everybody else. Just again, working to keep the business of the college moving forward and working with our colleagues and maintaining the highest quality academic environment we can for our students and a high-quality environment to work in for our staff. So nothing further at this point, but we are working very hard, as is everybody else, on gathering data and evidence for the accreditation process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next we have the Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report. Is President Jimenez with us?
I do not see Ms. Jimenez, but I do believe Dr. Tahada has joined us.
Oh, okay. Dr. Tahada, are you ready to make a report?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone, trustees, colleagues, and students. So the Academic Senate is launching Phase 3 of the IDI of the... It's a long day, I'm sorry. Instructional Design Institute. And I really want to thank... The Academic Senate wishes to thank Dean Robin Darkangelo for her support of the Academic Senate Instructional Design Institute. She has supported us from its inception this summer. Actually, we wouldn't have been able to do it without her support. So I want to say thank you to Dean Robin Darkangelo. And we want to also note Dr. Parker's support. We appreciate her support and commitment to furthering the goals of the Instructional Design Institute as it continues to meet the pedagogical training needs of faculty. So I just wanted to mention that. Now, these efforts are collaborative ones. And so they've been invaluable. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Dr. Kraft as well. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows we are very grateful for the support. Phase 3 of the project has, at its core this semester, the assessment of the impact that the distance education pedagogy training and the culturally responsive pedagogy training has had in our classrooms on our students. So we will be, in the next few weeks, calling for faculty to put together a faculty research team to develop a model that will allow us to study the impact of both of the workshops, the distance ed and the culturally responsive pedagogy workshops. And we're trying to... We're going to be developing a model that will ensure the confidentiality of both the faculty and the students, but will allow us to collect the data that we need to see and to measure the impact that we're having with our students. I am also completing the IEP grant proposal to further develop the Academic Senate Instructional Design Institute. And so that's kind of like the core piece of what we're doing. Let's see. Catherine, is there any way that I can share screen? For just for my next... For my next segment? You're muted if you're talking.
Yes. Let me see here.
I have the share screen button on my... At the bottom of my...
Okay. Go ahead and see how this works.
All right. Let me go ahead and... So... There we go. I wanted to share a little bit with the board where we are in terms of discussions that we are having with Dr. Kraft, as well as with a Council of Presidents. But I wanted to share with the board a few things from the State Academic Senate. I wanted to say...
Eileen, I'm not seeing your screen yet, so I don't know if you actually should...
I'm putting it up. Okay, host screen. All right. It says, let's see, post-disabled participant screen sharing. Can you enable it again, Catherine, please?
There you go.
Thank you so much. So one of the things that we're doing is we've entered into discussions with Dr. Kraft about the powers of the senate. And one of the things that I want to make very clear to the board and to our colleagues is that I am here as a representative of the voice of the faculty. So when I speak to the board, when I speak in meetings, I am very careful to be speaking for the group that I represent. You're not getting what Eileen thinks. You're getting the concerns of the faculty, the Academic Senate. And so I wanted to share, we've entered into some discussions around clarifying the role of the senate and the powers of the senate. And I want to... I guess I'll frame the next couple of slides. This is from the State Academic Senate, from the Leadership Institute at the State Academic Senate. So this was put together by them. But I want to just kind of contextualize both our participation in governance and tenure are rooted in the idea of academic freedom. That this is how we... How for... Since the idea of academic freedom, this is how academic freedom is preserved. And that's why it's... Why we see it as important. So these are the... These are some of the powers of the senate. And we've been discussing this with Dr. Kraft. We... While the union negotiates the Academic Senate through Title V, we do collegial consultation, which is a legal term. And so the governing board, that was the Board of Trustees, adopts policies delegating authority and responsibility to its Academic Senate. And then these are the powers that we have. We adopt policies through collegial consultation or the mutual agreement process. And it also guarantees the Academic Senate the right to meet with or appear before the board. These are the definitions that Title V gives in terms of who we are. And then this notion of academic and professional matters are described in the areas of what we call the 10 plus 1. And I wanted to show... So the idea of collegial consultation and effective participation and how collegial consultation, it's different than consulting. It is, again, a legal term. And what effective participation means in terms of classified and students. And so the other is the idea of rely primarily upon... What does rely primarily mean? And what does mutual agreement mean? Right? And so these are just some of the things that we've been discussing with Dr. Kraft. Okay. And how our relationship to the board, to you all, to the board. When rely primarily? The recommendations of the senate will normally be accepted, and only in exceptional circumstances and for compelling reasons will the recommendations not be accepted. And we've talked about, at Napa Valley College, we have two of the 10 plus 1 that are rely primarily. One is curriculum, and the other is programs and certificates. And then mutual agreement. And what that means. And what compelling reasons, exceptional circumstances and compelling reasons mean. Okay? And again, just noting where the boundaries are. And I'll end with this one. So thank you, Catherine, for allowing the screen share. I appreciate it. And so the Academic Senate wants to ensure that our unique relationship to the board is preserved in our policies and procedures. And of course, our relationship with the Superintendent President. So we are committed to, you know, continuing to work with the Office of the President to clarify our roles as they are described in the Ed Code, Title V, and AB 1725. We did delay... The Academic Senate has chosen to delay a request for the State Academic Senate to do a technical visit. We first, we had... We realized that we had not met with Dr. Kraft. And so we are continuing our discussions with Dr. Kraft. And if we determine that we need a technical visit, we'll go ahead and proceed. But we didn't want to schedule a technical visit before meeting with Dr. Kraft and having these discussions to clarify our roles. Let's see. And then the Academic Senate continues to welcome a campus-wide conversation that clarifies the role and authority of the Academic Senate in governance. And I've shared the following with Dr. Kraft as we continue to try to clarify the role of the senate in the 10 plus 1 and how we implement that in our policies and procedures. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tahada. Before I let you go, I have a quick question for you. I understand... I believe that the Academic Senate is reviewing a possible recommendation for a policy on the honorary degrees issue that has been on our future agenda items for a while. And I just wanted to see if you are anticipating any kind of recommendation or if you believe we should move forward with just the CCLC template or, you know, just trying to move this off of our list. I wanted to find out where you guys are.
On the honorary degrees... Well, actually, the honorary degrees took a little bit of a backseat, trustee Baker, because we had... We actually had 15 other policies that we were looking at. I would be happy to take that back to exec, and we can have a conversation. And I'll have more to say about it at our next... When I give the next board report. How about that?
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. So then I believe, next we have a Classified Association Report from Valerie Moll. Is she with us?
Yes, she is. Valerie, are you still there?
Thank you, Catherine. And thank you, Bob Harris. We were going to also mention that our classified professionals are also actively participating in the accreditation process. And we're all very excited about the opportunity to interact with all of the constituent groups on campus. For me, this may be my last accreditation. So I'm very excited about being part of the process and the team that I'm working with. On tonight's agenda, we want to acknowledge and applaud the reclassification of Maria de Jesus Lopez from admissions and records technician to admissions and records specialist. Maria has been a classified professional at Napa Valley College since December of 2014. And I'm not going to talk about retirements tonight. The classified professionals continue to telecommute, spending some time on campus each week during the ongoing COVID-19 restrictions, and look forward, very much so, to vaccination opportunities and returning to a more normal work environment, whatever that might look like in the future. And finally, the classified union will conduct elections this spring. The process will begin in March, and it ends in May with a new board. And you'll be seeing some fresh faces at that point. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you. I was having to let a cat back out. She wanted in.
I understand.
She wanted back in. Okay. So next we have a Classified Senate Report from Mr. Shoemaker. Are you with us?
I do not see Mr. Shoemaker.
All righty. Then we can move on then to Faculty Association Report from Ms. Iwamoto. I know I saw her earlier.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone. It's good to see you again. It feels like it's been a long time. I don't have much to report because we've only been back in negotiations for about two sessions. I did want to report that we are making progress, encouraging progress on our salary proposal, which is a resource allocation model that we've been... Our negotiators have been speaking with the district negotiators on for... It seems like a while now. But it is moving. So... And we're really doing a lot of good things, I think. We are all really hoping to sign a contract at the end of the semester. So fingers crossed on that one. We are working diligently towards it. I know there are going to be a lot of MOUs that we're going to have to go through and incorporate some into the contract, extend some. Of course, everything's sort of up in the air because there are so many variables and there are so many things outside of our control that, of course, will become factors in this as well. But as of right now, we are just plugging along. And that is about all I have to report for tonight. So thank you. Thank you, trustee Baker.
Thank you. Yes, and I agree. It feels like it's been a long time since yesterday. Okay. So let's see. Next we have Information Reports from President and Cabinet. Wrong.
Did we miss ASMBC? Or was it just me who just checked out?
Oh, no, you're right. We didn't... Wait. No, she wasn't with us.
She was not present. I don't see her here.
Unless we have anything from our student trustee, from them?
No. Yuzvi has been MIA all day. We have not heard from her. So I have nothing on that front.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. And Dr. Kraft?
Thank you. Couple things. I'll walk through Cabinet. I've got a... We'll toss it back and forth here a little bit. But first up, let me say that the tone and tenor of the discussions with the faculty and the senate are very good upbeat. I tend to be a little more optimistic and upbeat than, you know, than most. But I think Eileen is describing it in a good way. You know, I would say that, you know, each district and college in the state has slightly differently... Different interpretations of BPs and ARs or APs, as they call them. So they reflect the culture. So I think it's really good. These meetings of the Academic Senate are important in clarifying and establishing the relationships. And I think necessary every so often. And we're kind of in that place of every so often. So I'm feeling very good about it, and I really appreciate it. So thank you for, you know, Eileen and the senate and the leadership for, you know, working. We're on schedule now for to meet bi-weekly to cover these. And I expect the same kind of progress that we've heard from the other folks. I feel very good about it. Second, key update. Meetings with myself, Bob Parker, Holly Dawson, with the Gasser Foundation first, covering a range of collaborative topics. You know, we all kind of live here in South Napa, so to speak. And we're trying to define with the Gasser Foundation shared interests. And certainly, we have our students as a common piece, education, economic, you know, the physicalness of that, traffic, and a lot of other things. We also hosted, after we met with the Gasser Foundation, we discussed with them, with the Gasser Foundation folks, meaning to express our collaboration in kind of needs or update with the individual city council members. So we met with Navarez and Alessio Painter Lurus, Mayor Sedgley, City Manager Potter, Chief Executive Staff. And we spent about an hour with each of those folks independently just talking about, you know, our campus housing project, which is really nice. Bob kind of unpacked that. Holly talked about, you know, the kind of outside, you know, public perspectives of those things. And certainly, I think it was important for the city to hear that this is not a solo, siloed college activity, that it is viewed in Napa as an important part of a Napa solution, especially in part of South Napa, where we are really neighbors with what will probably be emerging is Napa Pipe and the Golf Course and Kennedy Park and the college and Gasser and even across the two... Is that New Century Hollywood? What is that, across the Mola Bridge? I don't know what that's called.
Century Plaza, I think.
Century Plaza? You know, so it's starting to shape. I mean, I think it was a group of pieces. I mean, we're certainly... I'm looking at Beth Goff down there. We're certainly not talking yet about this gap between American Canyon, which is another conversation. And I think American Canyon has its own unique, beautiful profile. So this is about this collection right around the college. I'm excited about it. We have agreed to continue the kind of supportive opportunity conversations. So yeah, I'm not sure where they're going to go yet. But it's clear that we're in the mix. We would like the city to be in the mix. And I'm very optimistic about where we might go. It's... We've tried this over the years. I'm going to shift a little bit and then come back to my... Another piece of my report. But under my report, generally speaking, we do a quick update from the Napa Valley College Foundation. And Jessica Thomason is their executive director. And I'm doing a bit of an intro so she can queue up and not have to jump on that. queue up and not have to jump on this. So I don't know, Jessica, whether you can present a brief overview, and then I'll come back and talk about some reorganizations and realignments, and then on to the rest of cabinet. There you are.
Hi. Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Kraft. I'm happy to give a brief update. Good evening, trustees and trustee Baker. And I can make this brief. We're doing a lot of work on the Wine Education Center right now. And we had a meeting with Mal Mannion with the Wine Spectator, and they have asked us to provide a more detailed proposal with a construction timeline, budgets, updated information on the VWT program, including enrollment and alumni. So we're in the process of gathering this all together, and Ron is, Dr. Kraft is working very closely with us on it, as well as Matt Christensen. And so we will have a proposal to send. Our goal is next week. And then we will further discuss their gift with them. So our consultant has been working with us. One of the things we've looked at is an expanded vision for the Wine Education Center. And we've been talking with various community members in the wine industry and donor prospects about what some of the needs are within the industry, and are gathering that feedback and looking at how we can improve the campaign plan. We've looked at potentially including a scholarship component and internship component, possibly an endowed faculty position, improved shop facilities and mechanization in the vineyard. And so all of these components we're crafting into our case statements and will be, will be looking at. In addition, the Wine Education Committee, that's a part of the board, we have been having donor screening meetings where we've been looking at our prospect list and our shortlist of who we're going to go to first, and just start the conversation with everyone about the campaign. In addition, the board is working on a online wine auction to do prior to the close of the fiscal year, and that will hopefully take place mid-June. So we're looking at planning that right now, and I'll follow up with information. And our scholarship program is going really well. And currently, I know that that number of applicants is looking good, and committees are gathering. They'll start the review process in March and on track to get awards out in May. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. The, there is, as you can see and feel it, there's a sense of, you know, kind of renewed optimism and momentum. And you can feel it, as new members are joining the foundation, I think that they're seeing more, a much more definitive direction for engagement, which is exactly what we want. We would, besides the board, obviously tonight, and staff, having another additional 15 board members out there and directors, talking about the college directly to folks, which expands, is incredibly important for us, and I'm excited. So we'll be setting up more one-on-ones and some meetings as we kind of emerge out of this, and eventually have a joint board meeting, which we had talked about. We may have to pull that off virtually, but you know, that's, that's a second piece. I can take a, a little timeout here, Madam Chair, if you'd like to move on to John Tudor and that item, and I can come back if you'd like, whatever you'd like.
If he is available.
I see his picture down there. I see John, unless he's just watching for the fun of it.
Do people do that? I used to do that. I don't think anybody does that anymore.
I'm available.
Awesome. All right. Why don't we go ahead then, and we'll bounce back to 7.1, which was our contract with the County of Napa to provide support for redistricting of trustee areas required as a result of the 2020 federal census. And Mr. Tudor is here with us, and I think Mr. Parker is going to also assist in introducing this topic.
Well, I'm really just here to introduce Mr. Tudor to present this topic. He's, he's the one who has provided us with the contract that we're bringing to you for approval tonight, and the information about what this redistricting process is. And so I will turn it over to Mr. Tudor.
Well, thank you very much. Just for a little history, we've been doing redistricting for the college since 1990. I was already the assessor then. I wasn't the registrar of voters, but I became the registrar of voters in 1998, and did the college redistricting along with the Board of Education and the supervisor districts in 2020, excuse me, in 2000, 2010. And here we are again, hoping that you will help us to work together to do this. By tradition, but not by requirement, the college and the Board of Education trustee areas are both seven, and they both cover almost exactly the same geographic area, which is Napa County plus a little bit of Sonoma County. The Board of Education has one little tiny piece in the southeastern corner of Napa County, which is actually the person, the voters in there elect the Board of Trustee Area Two from the Solano County Board of Education. So that little tiny piece with about 200 voters are not in the fourth trustee area of Napa, of the Board of Education. They are in the college board, however. So that's the only difference. We work very closely with both Sonoma and Solano Counties to make sure we have the correct population numbers. We deal mostly with our own, but they will be feeding us the small population numbers in Sonoma County, which elect in the seventh trustee area of the college, and the small portion of the fourth trustee area of the college, which is in Solano County, but which is only affects the Board of Education. So the consultant that the board has gone, will be hiring after we get your approval on this contract, we already have the approval of the Board of Education, is well-known throughout the state. He did the council districts for the city of Napa in 2020. He'll be doing that again for them in 2021. He has master contracts with the Community College Association and with the School Boards Association. And because the county, the two trustee areas are pretty much coterminous between the college and the Board of Education, he has agreed to split his base fee between the two entities, which will save each entity about $16,500 if they were to go it on their own. We are going to have the ability for the public to participate, not just through public hearings, but to be able to draw their own maps, manipulate their own data, make suggestions. That was used by the city of Napa in 2020. This is a new tool that we didn't have in 2010, and so I'm very excited about that. Assuming the college approves the contract this evening, we will be going to the Board of Supervisors on the 23rd of February to approve all three contracts, and then we will be immediately returning to you to talk about the public hearing schedule. As you're aware, because of controversy about the senate, the senate statistics, the data has been delayed substantially. It was supposed to be available to Congress on the 31st of December. It may not be available to Congress until the 31st of March. That's quite a delay. We were supposed to have it on the 31st of March. We may not get it until the 31st of July. And so under the new Fair Maps Act, passed by the state of California, we would be on a very, very compressed schedule if we tried to hold all of the public hearings after the census data was released. We are allowed, you as my client are allowed, to hold two of those hearings before the census data is released, to give the public an understanding of the process, to explain the tools that will be available to them to participate in the process. And so we plan to do that, maybe having our first public hearing as early as March. The only public hearing that the college board itself is required to have as a part of your agenda is the final public hearing, which is the one at which you adopt the maps and take public testimony. I will, of course, invite all of the board members from both the Board of Education, the Board of Supervisors, and your board to any of the public meetings that I will be hosting, which is allowed, so that you can listen to what the public has to say, can participate, and discuss what you want from your own perspectives as individual board members. And then we'll bring the draft back to you for the final public hearing. Now, we're on two time tracks here. The Board of Supervisors must make their final determination no later than December 15th of 2021, because two supervisor districts are on the June 7th, 2022 ballot. And that means that filing for those supervisor districts, and we already have several candidates, because both Supervisor Wagonconnect and Supervisor Dillon in the first and third districts respectively are retiring. So there's a lot of interest in those races, and we already have people coming out of the woodwork. But they need to know whether they're in the district, so the Board of Supervisors has to complete its time well before you do, when we're able to be on a two-track system under the flexibility of these contracts, because you're not required to adopt your trustee areas until April 15th of 2022, because you don't appear as board members until the November 8th, 2022 election. So we have a much different timeframe. We can, we will bifurcate some of the hearings if we need to, and hold one set for the board if we're further along in that process, and then the other set for you as we get there. Now, the census data is not going to change between when it's released and when you have to make your final decision. So we're going to try and keep everything as consistent as possible, but we are not under the same time pressure with the college board or the Board of Education. And we do have that flexibility that I'm happy to work with you and the staff of the college and Barbara Nemko and her team on managing that part of the process. With that, I did have a PowerPoint I'd set in. It's only three slides. I try and make sure not to take a lot of your time. Let me just go through this briefly. So the graphic here is that the census data, and this has been true since 2010 and in 2000, comes out in a data format that can be manipulated in geographic information systems. So it's available not just to the consultant or to the experts, but it's available to the public to learn how to draw districts. And so that's what that first map is talking about. One thing I do want to say, we've had almost no population growth in the last decade in Napa County. I know that parts of the county have actually lost population. So it's not like we're the inland empire down in Riverside and San Bernardino County that have been growing rapidly, and there are lots of pressures as to how to handle those kinds of things. So one, we haven't grown much. Two, we're a very homogeneous county. That may have changed. I doubt it. But almost each of the five supervisor districts, and that then applies to all of your trustee areas, have pretty much the same percentage of ethnic minorities and language minorities. There's no one part of the county that is specifically heavier, especially in the Hispanic. Now, as far as the Asian Pacific Islanders are concerned, they're primarily located in the city of American Canyon. But that is part of one supervisor district, and even though they're a large part of the city of American Canyon, they are not a large percentage of the county as a whole. If I could have the next slide, please. So as you know, it's one person, one vote. That's what we're all after. Equal size. We want to make sure that the population is equal. We came very, very close. We're not one voter different or one resident different, but we're very close to that. We're all, our total deviation between the seven college trustee areas was only less than 2%, and we could have a 10% margin. So we work very hard to make it as close as possible, because that's in the best interest of your voters and your residents to be there. We're going to do a great deal on outreach to reach out to the community. As I mentioned, we are also going to be able to have them participate in the process, which I think will be very helpful. And if I could have the last slide, I believe it's the last slide. Try and get through this quickly. So we've discussed most of this already. We're sharing the cost between the three entities, because that makes the best sense to use a single consultant. And then finally, the last slide, if I could, thank you, whoever's running them for me. We hope to begin, as I said, our public hearings in March and April. We will have draft map options shortly after the census data comes out, hopefully in August and September, for the Board of Supervisors at least, perhaps even for the college board and the Board of Education. And then those are the two deadlines I mentioned. It's actually April 15th instead of May 15th, because I need time with our staff in the Elections Division to change these new trustee area boundaries and supervisor district boundaries into the correct precinct database, so that every voter gets a chance to vote on the correct trustee that represents them coming up. So that's essentially my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Do we have any questions from our trustees? Do we have any public comment on this item, Catherine?
No, I do not see any hands raised, and no email.
Well, if we don't have any questions, and it sounds like we might be prepared to approve this contract, do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval, trustee Baldini.
And we have a second?
Second, Ines.
Okay, so we have a first from trustee Baldini and a second from trustee De Luna. And so trustee De Luna, how do you vote?
Aye.
And trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Scholz?
Aye.
And myself, Baker, I will, I also, I say aye, so we have a unanimous approval of the contract. Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for your time.
Not at all. Thank you all, and we'll be in touch. And I do want to compliment the staff, not only President Kraft, but Ms. Kittle and Mr. Baker and the other members of the staff. They've been so responsive and available as we put this together for you. That's been true of the Board of Education as well, but I just wanted to say, it's been such a pleasure having this shepherded under such good guiding hands.
Good to know. Thank you so much for that feedback. All right. So I think that we are then returning to 8.7. Dr. Kraft, your, the finish of your report and cabinet reports?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jessica Thomason. As you recall, just did the Napa Valley College Foundation report. And we'll come back as we develop that in a little more detail. This board passed a resolution several years ago in support of the Wine Education Center pursuing the philanthropy and going out. And it's been, it's been interrupted on several occasions by wildfires, by COVID, you know, by all kinds of, you know, interesting pieces kind of rolling in. It'll be a great update. We'll come back to you in the later spring with, you know, maybe just a Wine Education Center presentation, five or six minutes to kind of bring you up to speed. So, next item, an important reorganization, realignment within the presidents and the administrative services area. I think board, you have seen, at least many of you have seen reorganizations or realignments. They occur periodically, either to better align student success. There's teaching learning, there's support units, operational units, and it's, and they're always done to enhance or streamline, build efficiencies, create a stronger collaborative structure. And at the end of the day, we're only doing reorgs or realignments to improve the condition of students on their pathway to wherever they're going. And that, that's, that's key for us. Uh, and that, that's, that's key for us. Several months, um, we spend in gathering input, analyzing our approach. Um, and a decision was made to reorganize, if you will, the OIA, Office of Institutional Advancement Auxiliary Unit, in the President's area into two separate units, each focusing directly on different aspects of a previous single unit in both areas, uh, really on a rapid growth path, and that's why we really, really looked at it. Let me talk about a couple assumptions, um, that, that we make when we, when we, when we address either realignments or reorgs. It should not increase overall FTE staffing levels. That's, that's one thing that's really important for us to do. We're not trying to hire more people, and we're not through these, and in fact, we're trying to get more efficient. Transition should occur, this was an important one, early this spring, spring semester, especially during the COVID protocols and face-to-face instruction limitations to reduce any transition disruptions. So we're trying to do this as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Um, as I said, the reorg has to directly benefit all constituents, and, and otherwise we really have to think about it. So when we do these, we kind of draw a three sixty circle and then come and look at each, you know, how will people be better served? And in this case, um, I feel really good about if each of those. Each unit will develop clear goals and objectives and focus on annual deliverables in line with the college's strategic planning goals. So, uh, I'm going to talk real quickly about the President's area. Um, public, OIA is being, um, transformed a bit into Public Affairs and Communication Unit. Um, Holly Dawson will expand the scope of her present role, assume a director, um, to this PAC unit to include marketing promotion, website coordination, and social media aspects. Um, a, a real natural expansion, I think, of, of that role, um, a good fit and certainly not, um, far afield. Um, two members of the current OIA staff remain in the unit, including, um, Ally Shul, um, Will knows that person, as Marketing and Events Technician. Uh, Scott Allen as the Marketing and Communications Manager, they stay. And then on loan, graciously from Sarah Parker and the, I think it's the Arts and Humanities Area, we have a, um, Instructional Ass- Assistant, Kelly Dunn, who's been helping out and, um, doing a, a great job. So that, that would, will be this new unit under the President's area of Public Affairs and Communication. Um, I want to speak just a little to Carol Lee Catalica. I want to thank and congratulate Carol Lee. Um, dedication and focus on MVC, our students and the work she has accomplished in this OIA Auxiliary Services Unit that was a mile wide and twenty feet thick. Um, she's going to be joined by Famela Prisinto as Administrative Assistant, and, and Carol Lee and Famela will transition to a new unit, more appropriately, I believe, in the Administrative Services Area under VPAS Bob Parker. And, um, I think Bob's gonna, gonna walk us through that reorg, and then he has a couple more items under his cabinet report, and then I'll continue on with the other, with the other folks. Bob?
Great, so thanks, Dr. Kraft. So yes, we're, we're pretty excited to have those enterprise activities moving over to the Administrative Services Unit and, uh, really is a good fit, uh, with all of the other areas of administrative service, services that provide, uh, support to college operations. And so this new unit, which will be headed by Carol Lee, is, we're calling it the Enterprise and Auxiliary Services Department. And Carol Lee will be the Director of Enterprise and Auxiliary Services. You see that, uh, job title change on the HR document that is being presented to you tonight. And what that means is that Carol Lee will bring with her her, uh, affiliation with and responsibility for the operations of the District Auxiliary Services Foundation, or DAS, and the Viticulture and Winery Technology Foundation. Um, she will also, and so with, uh, DAS come all of those auxiliary or enterprise activities, the operations of the bookstore, the operations of cafe, and other food services on campus. Um, we also see expansion and will be planning for expansion of activities under that unit uh to include responsibility for contract education. And, uh, in particular, responsibility for the, what we're calling the Workforce Training Center, which will provide, uh, training opportunities to the general public and to, uh, businesses and other organizations throughout the county in areas of health occupations, um, uh, hospitality and culinary training, food safety, things of, things of that nature. So very excited about, uh, the opportunity to expand those offerings and to take advantage of the, uh, expertise that we have in-house in those areas. So that's our Enterprise and Auxiliary Services, uh, operation. I do want to touch quickly on housing. We had, uh, uh, said that we would, uh, you had asked for updates on housing on a regular basis, and we, uh, will be doing that at each, uh, uh, at this board meeting and each future board meeting. And so just to let you know what's been happening with housing since the last time you met, uh, on Tuesday, February second, we had a campus housing forum. That campus housing forum included, uh, or was attended by members of the campus community and members of the public, and some of you were there as well. Thank you for attending. And those who attended saw presentations from our, uh, consultants, the Scion Group, as well as from the architects, HPI architects who designed the buildings and kind of walked through what those buildings will look like, where they'll be located, what will be housed in each of those buildings. And also an update from our developer, the Martin Group, and, uh, what the schedule is and what our timeline is moving forward. And so it was an opportunity for people to ask questions and to get a little bit of information. A lot has happened since the last time we had a campus forum, and so, uh, pleased with the attendance and with the outcome of that forum. The other most recent development just happened this morning is that we had interviews with two potential nonprofit owners for the project. So remember, this is a public-private partnership or P three. And so that structure is that there's this nonprofit entity that, that actually owns the, the, uh, housing project, has the, uh, contract with the operator of the housing project. And our relationship is through the, uh, long-term ground lease that we provide to that nonprofit operator. But the nonprofit operator really is a partner to the college, and, uh, the way that we structure that ground lease, uh, indicates or provides us with opportunities to, uh, provide input and, and exercise a certain level of control over the, uh, housing project. And so a couple of very, there aren't a lot of these nonprofit, uh, uh, housing, uh, uh, organizations who exist, but the two who we talked to today have a vast experience in, in this area. Um, uh, one in particular has experience with California Community Colleges. And so we will be meeting again next week to make a decision on, uh, who we will, uh, enter into an agreement with. And that's the last piece of this whole process. We, we, once we have made that selection, we will have the nonprofit owner, we will have the, uh, uh, underwriter for the bonds that would be issued. We have the operator who will, uh, uh, do the leasing and the day-to-day operations. And we have the developer, we have the construction company, we have the architects, and so everything will be in place at that point for, uh, housing to move forward. And so we'll have more to report to you next month, but that, those are the key updates for today in terms of housing. And then the last piece in my report, just to give you an update on where we are with technology. And so at, uh, last month's meeting, you approved us entering into a contract with Dyn Tech to provide consulting services to us, to assist us in moving forward with addressing our single sign-on issues and, uh, stabilizing email. And I'm happy to report that we had our kickoff meeting with them, uh, last week on Thursday, February fourth. They looked at where we are, they looked at what we need to do, and they believe that they can accomplish everything within six weeks. Uh, that we will be able to move our faculty and staff email to an Office three sixty-five environment. And perhaps most importantly, we will be able to move our single sign-on to the cloud, which will increase our capacity and eliminate the, uh, issues that our students and faculty are having with accessing single sign-on. The one thing to note about single sign-on is that we will need to bring the system down for a few hours in order to make that switch. And so if we're looking at six weeks from now, that puts us very close to spring break. And so spring break would be a great time, we think, at least, that would be a great time for us to do that. But we will be consulting with Academic Affairs and Student Affairs and other areas of the college before we make the final decision as to when we will make that switch. But that timing around a spring break should be a good time for us to make that change. And so that is my update on technology. Uh, that is all of my updates, and so I will, um, turn it back to Dr. Kraft.
Actually, really quickly, I do have a question for you, uh, about the housing, uh, the, uh, the people that you interviewed with, that you're planning to make a decision. Are, are we, are, is Scion or anybody else assisting us in that selection process?
Actually, everyone is assisting us in that selection process. So our, our interviews are in, because everyone will have a relationship. So our interviews today included our own staff, it included our Scion consultants, it also can, included folks from Citibank and from the Martin Group. And so, uh, and so that entire group will be meeting again next week to compare notes and to assist us in making the final decision.
Thank you.
You know, it's an insightful question, too, because I was, I was thinking, y- you know, a- a- all the cabinet members here, I mean, are working on this student housing piece from different vantage points. So as it, as it arrives, it's just not, you know, put the key in the door and then figure out the problems. So, so one of the things, even on this reorg, um, that we're talking about in terms of the Enterprise Services and, and, and OIA to, to Public Affairs and Communication is in preparation for that side of the, the seven twenty-four residential campus that we're going into. Sarah and I have conversations, Oscar and team certainly. And so thank you, Bob, I, I appreciate that. Um, Oscar, why don't you, um, bring us up to date on, on your stuff?
Good evening, Dr. Kraft, thank you, good evening. Um, actually, yeah, Student Affairs is about to, to embark on a new endeavor. Uh, is, is initiative that, that we've been thinking of for, for a year or so. And basically what it is, is that on May the sixth, uh, we will be piloting, um, what I'm calling High School Luncheon. Uh, what, what the idea with this project is, is that, as you know, we have a high school breakfast, which is about a two and a half hour, uh, production in the, uh, in the fall semester. And the idea with the luncheon is to have this, uh, an hour and a half in the spring, which will provide our guests, the same guests that we invite to the breakfast, about hundred sixty folks or so from four different counties, uh, to let them know what, what is going to be happening for the fall semester at Napa College. So this event will, as always, uh, will include a presentation, uh, from, from, from Academic Affairs, from Student Affairs, and from other areas. Again, the idea is to prepare our, uh, our partners and our colleagues at our K through twelve, uh, districts with, with what, uh, with what Napa College is planning for, for the fall. Uh, at the next board meeting in April, I'll, I'll, I'll provide a bit more details. Uh, the other activity I want to show with you is that we are also, uh, going forward with the commencement. Now, we don't know what exactly it's going to look like. It may be the same as last year, which is virtual course, maybe a combination of things. And so, um, uh, the, the commencement team headed by Martha Navarro will be presenting to cabinet next Wednesday the options that we've been looking at, along with the, uh, price cost for those options. And, um, we also are hoping to have input from, from our students. So, um, and that too will, will, uh, I'll provide you more information at our, at our meeting in, in April. And that's it, Dr. Kraft, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you know, one of the hallmarks of community colleges is that we're nimble. I mean, you know, entrepreneurial, and that's kind of the hallmark of it. Who thought we'd be talking about commencement again? You know, we did this last year, but here we are. So thanks, Oscar. It's, um, we're, we're in better shape, I think. Um, Sarah, please.
Hi, everyone, good evening. Our spring semester is well underway, so I'm going to bring you up to speed on that. And then I want to also reference, uh, you know, speak to what Dean Harris referenced about our thinking ahead for, for summer and fall. So as, as we experienced in fall, we've continued to have a decline in enrollment. And I, as I've shared with you before, this is not unique to Napa Valley College. Community colleges across the state and across the nation have experienced similar declines. Um, a report came out at the end of December, a National Clearinghouse Report, that found nationally among high school graduates, twenty-two percent fewer students enrolled in college immediately after graduating from high school this year. And we also know that there are a variety of economic and social, um, challenges for our students that are probably contributing to lower attendance numbers. But still, within this reality, you know, our students are accessing our services in very high numbers, and the, and students are taking larger loads. So our full-time student population is up nine percent this spring semester. And I, our faculty are demonstrating just incredible creativity and compassion, regardless of what modality they're teaching in. And so it really does amaze me sometimes to, you know, just as Dr. Kraft and, um, Oscar spoke to, you know, not only is the regular work carrying on, but new collaborations and initiatives are emerging. So thinking ahead, I wanted to provide you a brief update on plans for summer and fall sessions. Our summer schedule is now in its second draft phase and will be finalized by the end of this month. It will go live on March ninth. And, and that schedule represents a slow shift in the direction of offering additional in-person classes in both essential workforce, as we've been doing for the last year, and also in more, moving into more activities-dependent courses being offered in person. So we're having extensive conversations in Academic Affairs in preparation for building our fall schedule. We made a slight adjustment to the timeline that we're using to design the schedule, pushing back, finalizing and posting it by about three weeks, so that we can continue to gain information about changing conditions and availability of vaccine. The, um, the schedule for fall enrollments will go live at the end of May. A survey has been sent out to faculty to solicit input related to in-person teaching. That survey will close next week, but it already has a very strong response rate. And it is one of many factors that will inform how we approach preparing for fall semester and the level of in-person instruction that we can offer. Um, so that input obviously will result from the faculty and also an accompanying student survey, input from faculty leaders and administrators, the, an analysis of the impact of running more in-person classes with reduced capacity, and of course, all current health and safety guidance. I think it's really important to note that we have been able to offer in-person classes safely across essential workforce disciplines throughout summer, fall, and now spring semester. I don't foresee that we're going to, you know, return to a, a quote-unquote "normal" fall semester, but I do expect that there'll be a continuation of a shift to increase our in-person offerings in order to best meet the pedagog- uh, pedagogical needs of our Uh, that's a, that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you, thank you. Um, we'll have some, you know, deeper conversations on this certainly, and, and, right after Charles' report, which is, um, next up, um, we'll talk a little bit about our retreat. Um, Charles, please.
Good evening. Catherine, would you mind pulling up, um, my presentation? Thank you. In June of two thousand and nineteen, um, honorable trustees, you supported the President's Area, um, reorganization of adding training and development to human resources. And since that time, Christina Rivera, um, who was previously a part of the Academic Affairs, um, Division, moved Division, moved over to the Office of Human Resources to become the Training Development Manager, and had led all efforts for, for the program that supports both classified professionals in our Administrator and Confidential Group. Next slide, please. The goals of our Training and Development Program is to manage and focus on a full performance management system for our employees. Another goal was to centralize all campus mandatory trainings, create programs that support growth within our current positions, bridge the evaluation process with training and development, measure return on investment for our training and development efforts, provide just-in-time training and development opportunities, purchase the software to help us with all of these goals and managing and tracking our efforts, and provide opportunities to learn who our students are and how we can best serve them. Next slide, please. About three and a half years ago, I began the discussion with the Administrative Confidential Senate, asking what are the needs, what are the training needs of that particular group? And three years ago, we actually started by offering trainings in the summer based on those needs. Well, now that we have a training and development program, we're now in, engage in dialogue with both senators, the Classified Professional Senate and the Administrative Confidential Senate, to continually identify not just the needs, but interests from each group, so that we can continually build programs and provide training opportunities for these groups. Next slide, please. We have been very successful in creating a one-stop shop for mandatory trainings. And I have to say, it has been a lot easier for the campus to not just send communication and have it come from one source rather than multiple departments, but it also helped us increase our completion rates for our mandatory trainings. We do have our website, it is found on our Office of Human Resources website, but it lists all of our mandatory trainings for any staff member to, to review. And going back to software, of course, purchasing the software will add more efficiency for us to keep track of all of our mandatory trainings. Next slide, please. These are our current key programs that we're working on, the Leadership Academy II, Caring Campus Administrative Assistance Certification Program, and our Keys Program. Next slide, please. The Leadership Academy is led by Chief Amber Wade, and the Leadership Academy II, our project manager for this project is Holly Dawson. We're working as a core team to develop the curriculum for Leadership Academy II. We just recently attended a three-day project management training, and our goal as a result of that training is to create a Train the Trainer model that will be used in this project-based cohort. As a cabinet, we will discuss together on some district-wide projects that we would like to see and offer as options for the cohort to choose from as they go through this program. And we do look forward to the completion of their work and bring to you their presentation and results of their projects. Next slide, please. Caring Campus, I have to give specific thanks to Cherie. Oh my goodness, I just heard her, she works in IT, your staff, Bob, Cherie, what's her name, her last name?
Marcos, Cherie Marcos.
Thank you, thank you, Cherie Marcos, because she is the one that brought this to our attention, is that I want me and my colleagues to go through Caring Campus. And Caring Campus is, is an initiative through the Institute of Evidence-Based Change, IABC, led by Dr. Brad Phillips, and we were accepted into the second cohort. And this really is about creating an environment on our campus for student sense of connectedness and belonging on our campus. And this program was launched in the fall, and since then, our cohort of our classified professionals participated in four sessions, and they have since provided a presentation to their supervisors, as well a presentation of where they're at at our flex day. And they are continually working on their initiatives, some of which includes encouraging the pronoun use in various aspects of how we do business and how we connect with our students, as well as using avatars instead of pictures in our emails to create a safe environment for those who don't feel comfortable using their photo for whatever reason. Next slide, please. In January, we launched our Administrative Assistance Certification Program. This program actually is developed from our efforts in transitioning our Child and Developmental, Child Care Center into, their, that staff into other areas on our campus, primarily in administrative assistant roles. Those particular staff members had no experience in providing support in an administrative position, so we created a year-long program to help them be successful. That springed the idea of the certification program to offer it to others in our campus. Oftentimes, we hire, and it's not just our organization, many organizations hire folks, and put them in the position without giving them a good foundation of training. This actually helps a lot of our colleagues not just create that foundation, but also potentially set them up for job mobility on our campus. The workshop includes customer service, understanding who our students are, Title IX, Structure of MVC, Operating in Public Organization, and we know that this is a big one, Board Policy, Ed Co., Brown Act, Share Governance, and of course, providing technical tools such as Adobe Outlook and all of the software that you will find under the Microsoft suite. And we're looking forward to creating this strong network within our administrative assistants and those who want to become administrative assistants, so that we can begin to share best practices and make, bring upon awareness of what each other is doing in each department, and encourage job mobility, and, and as I stated before, sharing best practices. Next slide, please. The next program that we have is also a year-long program, and this program is for our Administrative Confidential Group, it's our Keys Program. And our Keys Program has 10, excuse me, nine different sections. And the first section is Know Yourself and Your Organizational Culture. The, the participants in this program will go through three different assessments, they'll go through a True Colors process, they'll go through emotional intelligence, and we have contracted with Dr. Nimko, Martin Nimko, to serve as the career and professional, personal coach, who will meet with the participants three times through the program to identify areas that the participants want to leverage and areas that they want to grow. And then towards the end, we'll meet with them again to go over their growth and next steps. Additionally, we are working with Chief Amber Wade, that will come in and provide leadership workshop, and we're working with both the RP Group, as well as with Allied Path Consulting, providing information on team development, understanding organizational culture, and creating equitable and transformative leaders. In Section 2, we will be providing under communication skills, facilitation skills, compassionate communication, not just compassionate communication with ourselves and our staff, but also in dealing with students as well. And of course, I, an area we all, we all say, we want, we want, we want, is dealing with disputes and disagreements. Section 3 is Performance Management, and that's all about compensation, affirmative action, EEO, performance appraisal, and then we get into recruitment, employee development is all about coaching and developing your staff supervising, supervising in a collective bargaining environment, understanding the, the agreements, our, our employee contracts, understanding budget and finance, health and safety, and notice the very end, but it will be a theme throughout, taking care of yourself. And what I want to note also, too, in the Administrative Assistance Certification Program, that is also stress throughout the program. We cannot serve our students, we cannot serve our students if we ourselves do not focus on taking care of ourselves, our own wellness, to make sure we're bringing 100% of ourselves forward. We're also working on our summer institutes for this, this year, 2021, it'll be the third year we're offering summer trainings for our Administrative Confidential Group, it'll be our second year for our classified professionals. We continue to work with each senate to come up with different ideas and support from them as we are working to provide training and development programs. I would like to also thank Dr. Darla Cooper from the RP Group, Senior Dean of Students, Robin D'Arcangelo, and Holly Dawson for their support and guidance and advice and creative ideas as we looked at all of these programs in constantly developing and revising and getting the programs to where they are at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. There's, yeah, there's a lot happening, and, and, you know, I know, I know it's a lot to kind of digest, but I really wanted, Charles, to unpack this expansive reorg that you did. It shows what a reorg can do. And the TD is kind of like these last two initials on HR, and you know, and it's like, oh, yeah. But if you look at it, this is a piece that we were certainly missing, and that costs the institution, if you don't have it, millions, because people move along, and you've got to retrain, and having a great staff keeps people here and engaged, and it keeps new students here and engaged. So congratulations, it's, it's a great program. I had a, a debrief with Brad Phillips, Dr. Brad Phillips, of the, of this project today, and he, he wanted me to say hello and how proud he was of, of the staff, and specifically of Christina, so pass that along, please. I believe that that is all that we really want to talk about. I would note that we're going to have a retreat, we're scheduled for a retreat in mid-August, and I'm going to start beginning to send you some things on that in preparation for it. As you can feel, or you should feel, you are in the middle of probably the single biggest paradigm shift in the history of higher education in the last 50 years. It is a fabulous time to be a trustee and be at the policy level, so I'm glad you're here, and I'm pretty excited about all of it. Okay, we're off and running on, on, after my report, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think everybody's paradigm shifting right now. So, thank you very much, I'm very excited to hear all of that, because professional development is a huge, one of my, my things that I really enjoy and, and I think is super important, and also very excited to hear about the High School Luncheon, since I think everyone here knows I'm not a morning person, so you just keep pushing that back and eventually you'll get me at my best. So, all right, so we have consent calendar now, and let's see, is, do we have any items that need to be pulled for discussion?
I just wanted to mention that I was not here for the whole meeting of the 14th of January, I left because I was sick. So do we need to?
Do we need to note that in the?
Approve the rest, or?
Minutes, Catherine, or has that already been noted somehow?
I think it was noted.
I think it was.
It was noted, but you?
Yeah.
Can I vote on it?
Um.
Did you watch the video afterwards?
Some of it.
Only the exciting parts?
Yeah.
I would say that it's up to you, but you certainly, can I, the answer is yes. You never give a prior as a trustee, should you recuse yourself from a piece, that's, whatever you'd like to do or abstain either way.
No, I'm fine.
Move approval.
Second?
All right.
Trustee Dodd.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve from trustee Baldini and a second from trustee Dodd. Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
And trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Scholl?
Aye.
And then I will also vote aye, so we have a vote to approve the consent calendar. So, we have, moving on, we don't have any items in Academic Affairs, and we do not have, wait, so next one we have is 11, which would be Human Resources Academic Personnel Status, and even though I know this is Charles' wheelhouse, I believe, we're going to be hearing from Dr. Parker.
Wonderful, so this presents to you the anticipated transitions of our faculty from contract year to contract year, based on the recommend and recommendation of the in-depth work of their peer review teams that have supported them for the first, second, and third, fourth year of their contract. And you can see their names listed before you, I don't know if that's, must be further down on the list, it's not on my screen where I can see, oh, the attachment there. And just incredibly proud of all the, the effort that goes into compiling to bring this list to you each year.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
All right, then we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve. And trustee Iverson?
All right, so we have a motion from trustee Rios with a second from trustee Iverson, and with no discussion, I'm assuming. So we're going to vote now, so Ms. trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
And trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And student trustee Scholl?
Aye.
And myself, trustee Baker, I vote aye, so we have unanimous approval of that item. So, we have no items for 12, and so that moving on to 13, I don't believe we have anyone who is interested in running for CCT. If now is your last moment, or for, asked now or forever, hold your, hold your peace, at least until next year? All right, so we can move on to legislative priorities, and I think we have Ms. Dodd is going to be doing a brief intro, and then Ms. Dawson is going to take over.
That would be me. Go ahead and do it. We held our first legislative committee meeting on February 2nd, and I'm happy to say we have a lively group, I'm very excited to work with this group of people this year. Trustee Dodd, trustee Deluna, student trustee William Scholl have joined me on this committee, I'm serving as chair again. We also have fabulous support from Holly Dawson and Catherine Kittel, so I want to be upfront and thank them. At our first meeting, Holly did an awesome job of providing an update on the areas of focus for the current senate and assembly leadership. They're both strong proponents of community colleges, but if you recall, last year, they were dealing with, last year, yeah, 2020, they were dealing with COVID, and they had a very short session, so the legislative committee really didn't do a lot last year because nobody was doing a lot last year. So currently, there's an emphasis on student basic needs, financial aid, mental health, housing, the real cost of college, et cetera. The deadline that we're dealing with to introduce legislation is February 19th, so it's coming up. But in order for us to really look at what they're proposing, we're going to wait until our March meeting to look at what's really there. We have shared a few documents with you, some of these may be familiar. Um, some of these may be familiar uh, to those of you who have been on the board uh, for quite some time. We shared the California Community College Fast Facts, AACCC Advocacy Toolkit, which is always a good thing to have. Uh, the 2020, 2021 system budget and legislative requests uh, for California community colleges. We just have one action item that we'd like you to consider today. And that is, we, we would like to follow along and identify the three legislative priorities for 2021. They include equity for students, equity for academic opportunity, and equity for educational quality. We really felt that this was done very well. There's also um, in the document that you're seeing now, there are examples of what things fall under there. Um, we think that it's pretty broad as far as those um, priorities that are in place, where in addition to some of those examples, they, we could expand it. Uh, we're not saying we won't consider other things as they come up, but we felt that these three um, large kind of umbrella ideas really cover a lot of things that we would want to support and at least look at in the state legislature. So tonight we're just asking uh, for your support uh, through an action item of these legislative priorities. Are there any questions?
Any chance we have public comments on this item?
I don't see any public comment.
Alright, um, then Kat, I, I get a motion to, are we adopting? Yes, adopting the recommendation from the legislative committee to have some priorities.
So moved, trustee Dodd.
Okay, uh, so I heard uh, trustee Dodd and I think I heard trustee Baldini also.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we have a um, motion from trustee Dodd and a second from trustee Baldini. And I would just like to say I'm, i- i- is part of discussion is I'm very excited about this. I think this is going to make um, a lot easier for us to make decisions on what things we want to uh, support. So I'm excited about that. Alright, so uh, trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Hello, I'm sorry.
There you are.
Hi.
Okay, trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And student trustee Scholl?
Aye.
And I too shall vote aye. So we have unanimous support for our new legislative priorities. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we go, moving on to um, item 14.1, second reading of board policies. You have any questions? And are we actually adopting these at this point or are, are we taking action on these now that it's second reading?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so uh, do we have any public comment on this?
No, we do not.
Alright, um, I'm assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review. Do we have a motion to adopt our new policies?
Motion to adopt uh, the two policies, BP 4020 and BP 4029.
Thank you. And I should say, we could always do it separately if we needed to, but.
Trustee Iverson will second BP 4020 and 4029.
Alright, so we had a uh, motion from trustee Dodd and a second from trustee Iverson. And trustee Deluna, do you, how do you vote?
Uh, aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Scholl?
Aye.
And then I myself will also vote aye. So we have a unanimous adoption of our policies. And let's see, okay, so board reports, uh, so standing committees. I believe we've had a few meetings. Uh, do we have anything from? Actually, we have DOS up there, do we? Did, but the DOS have a meeting? I don't know that they did.
Not yet. The calendar's been coming out. We meet next month.
Next month, okay, okay. And then um, then for the, the Vediculture and Winery Foundation, Mr. Baldini?
Yes, we did, did have a, a meeting. And the uh, numbers look good. Thank you, Mr. Bob Parker, as far as the financials. And then most of the discussion was around the position. You've heard from uh, Jessica Thomas's presentation about uh, uh, possibility of a shop and, and add-ons or buildings, et cetera, et cetera, improvements to the Vediculture Winery Technology Center. And uh, so the, the requirement or potential requirement for a, a management position to oversee the, the uh, the center. So it, it's, we'll have follow-up meetings, but it was initially introduced. So that's the end of my report.
And trustee Goff, did you have anything more to say from your legislative affairs meeting?
No, I think that was, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, and I know the Audit and Finance Committee has not met, but we are working on getting a date in early March. So we should have a report for our next meeting. And Real Property did have a meeting. I don't think it was January 12th though. It's been more recent than that, wasn't it? I don't know, they're, all the days run together right now. So. Um, but we did have a, a, a meeting and we had a presentation or sort of, I guess you would even call it just a, a loose discussion with um, some other members of our community who were interested in uh, providing community housing, affordable housing and are looking for partners to work on putting together something potentially uh, on NBC property. At this point, um, we're just listening, kind of hea- hearing what they have to say. No decisions are being made at this point. Uh, I think um, the three of us that uh, serve on that committee, our general feeling was that we're not really ready for anything like that right now anyway, because we have not yet completed our own student housing project. And um, there's just a lot of um, things that we would like to see nailed down um, locally before we really move into anything of that scope. Uh, because we, we want to make certain that we have our campus master plan and some other things that are really nailed down. So that as we do continue to entertain these types of options and ideas, that we have a really strong uh, plan for how to respond to those things. So, um, so we are still going to continue listening, but as of right now, that's where we are. And let's see, what's next? We have McPherson, I don't think you, well, actually you are doing something at this point, aren't you?
Yeah, we are. We're, we're doing a lot. We actually met uh, February 9th. Uh, I want to do a shout out and thank you to Vicki Detlin, who not only arranged and got us all together last week, but has just blown my mind and gotten our next three meetings set. So I want to, I want to thank her for that. I am actually going to throw it over to Dr. Sarah Parker because it is really her office and her people and herself that are really moving and making this uh, move forward. So it's more appropriate for her to kind of give you an update. So Dr. Parker, if you wouldn't mind taking over.
Thanks, trustee Goff. Uh, so yes, we had our first meeting and it's a great committee. We have represented it, uh, representation, of course, from the Board of Trustees, from the NBC Foundation, uh, representative from Associated Students and Faculty. And we were able to finalize our timeline. And it's a, it's, I think, a really nice timeline because it gets the announcement and call for nominations out in just over a week, which gives uh, an extended opportunity for the nomination period, which will close right before faculty go on spring break, before the campus closes for spring break. Um, well, before um, we take that break. And then, you know, we, we just hope to advertise really widely and encourage a great, strong pool of candidates. So we went through the application and made sure that the instructions and um, advice for submitting a complete application was really thorough, so that we can select and honor another outstanding faculty member for this prestigious honor. And um, we will, we, our timeline uh, uh, obviously has us getting together to discuss criteria, to evaluate the applications and to make a final decision and, and bring that um, here for, for recognition.
Thank you again, Dr. Parker. I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you. Alright then, uh, Napa Valley College Foundation, trustee Iverson, anything to report? Other than what's already been reported by Jessica?
I really appreciate having Jessica being able to come in and present during the board meetings now. It's, there's a lot of movement with the foundation and I'm happy of, with the direction that we're moving right now. So more to come, as Jessica stated.
Okay, so I think that is concludes standing committee report. So then we can move on to future agenda items.
Is me trustee Baker?
Yes.
You were going to mention accreditation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, we, um, I did need to um, officially appoint uh, trustee Goff uh, as our representative to the McPherson Committee. For some reason, I thought I'd already done that, but maybe I just dreamed it. Um, so you're officially now. And then also um, another committee, the accreditation steering committee uh, is uh, pulling together right now as we're moving into accreditation and we need to appoint a trustee to serve on that. And I have asked a trustee Deluna to take that on. And I think it will be a really great opportunity for her to get to know all the ins and outs of the college and school us a little bit too, and keep us in touch and on top of that project. So, and she's already let me know that she's willing to accept that appointment. So now we can move on to future agenda items. Do we have?
I have one, um, not on chair.
Yes.
Uh, just really more about, and I understand it's COVID and there's different protocols, procedures right now, but about the use of the pool and what exactly are the guidelines and just? I, Dr. Kraft, we've talked about it a little bit, but I'm just curious about outside use of the college pool and what are the guidelines and if we're on the same page? Because I've had a few um, members in the community that have reached out from different organizations, so.
Sure, we can, you know, under this section, it's probably not going to be what you want to hear, but you know, a, a month from now, you're asking for that update, so.
No, sooner if we could, but.
Yeah, we can't discuss it under this.
Right.
But um, we could certainly look at the website, which has updated information, I believe, um, from Matt and Bob. But that's all we really can say. Otherwise, we're breaking ground to kind of go into that area. I can absolutely um, one-on-one, meet with you and, and uh, send you all the materials that I've shared with other trustees.
Okay.
Can we try, can we, oh, sorry, go ahead, Char.
I was just going to say uh, to trustee Iverson that if um, if you still want to bring that back uh, for future, we can always discuss it between now and when that post did. Um, and trustee Dodd, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, well, I, I've been receiving a lot of the same complaints. It appears that there is some confusion. So I think it would be nice to have at least just tracked on the um, item request in case we're not able to resolve it, um, you know, informally in that time. Um, I'll, you know, I will discuss it. I think as, as Dr. Kraft mentioned, we shouldn't. But um, I, I would, it would be nice uh, to just keep it, keep it on the radar. So and then perhaps at that time, we can provide an update to the board on the, the issues, the larger issues and, and if we've been able to resolve them.
That's good. And I, and I could say, what we can say here is like, Bob and I can get together with Matt. We can do a more formal um, memo to all of you, which is, which is um, a staff request, which is fine. And if it's still not enough, then we will absolutely, trustee Baker, will, will stick it on there and we'll uh, tackle it um, in, you know, three and a half short weeks.
It sounds good. Anybody have anything else? I have um, a couple of items that I would like to see on future. Um, first is let me just double check, uh, make certain that I did bring it up with Dr. Tahada in, after her report, that we are still moving forward on the honorary degrees. Although I did find out um, uh, Mr. Baldini, that we cannot legally give honorary degrees to trustees, sorry. Um, so maybe after you're done here.
Thank you.
Maybe it is.
That certainly, Madam Chair wasn't uh, for, for me. I just thought it for a month.
You know, and we can give them to anybody we want, including like, people who we don't even know, but we can't give them to, to anybody that we serve with, so.
But if you can't give it away, it's not worth anything.
Right, as well. Uh, the other, um, the two things that I wanted to uh, see if there's in, um, interest in bringing back uh, is uh, first off, I uh, had said previously that I would, had some interest in reevaluating our process for electing a chair and vice chair. And I have um, some thoughts based on some conversations I had um, during the trustee workshops um, through the, the, from last month. And so I wanted to see about bringing that back for some discussion and see where we can move that toward. And then the other thing I wanted to um, see about bringing back, uh, when we were talking about agenda building last week, when we were putting everything together, I was trying to remember where I had a thought and then where did it go? And um, I did finally find it, and if I can find it again, here we go. Um, the diversity, equity, inclusivity, uh, DEI, uh, the resolution that we did back in August, I think, um, when we were discussing that, one of the things that came up was something called an equity pledge. And in our original draft resolution, there was language that was included that in our process, we decided that that was really a little more broad and uh, maybe might be addressed better um, as something, as an equity pledge, which was an idea that came from another college. So if that is something that we wanted to explore again, we can also wait until we have our new director onboard and kind of see where that goes. I um, I think the general idea from what I was reading from these other schools is that it's something that would not just be the Board of Trustees. It would be something that would be developed um, collaboratively with all the constituents. So I wanted to unearth that so it did not get lost and see what kind of um, feedback we might have from the rest of the group and then we can move forward. Hearing no objections.
I always, I, I found that a kind of just a little bit hard to understand quite where you were trying to take that, so.
Well, yeah, and so maybe it's just something that we need to discuss further or maybe we can, like I said, we can wait and see what happens with this new hire, the new director that's coming onboard and kind of see, great, does we can share some information, see where it goes.
I, I, I think in this pregnant pause, I, I could add that um, as we're going out. We're working at the district level with the inclusivity committee and kind of mission building and figuring that out. And I think, I think in, in a couple of months, bringing kind of an update on where we are. Um, I was working with Holly on a, kind of a brief update of the call to action and, and those things. But I think um, certainly we're, we're not one, certainly it's going to be collaborative with all of our stakeholders at the college, you know, working on that kind of pledge. I think it's stronger um, message. So I would say that you could put, you could certainly put it on there as an agenda item that would appear in a few months and we can touch base on it to see how, how you all feel. I mean, just to keep track of it. It's, that's, that's my thought process.
Yeah, and I, I think that's really kind of in line with what my thought process is too. It's just kind of making certain that we keep it on the radar. And um, and, and we've also been discussing, Dr. Kraft and I have been talking about um, over. a variety of different options for how the, the board can kind of be more aware and involved without getting into the weeds of things and just keeping tabs on progress as we move through this process that will never actually end. So it'll be like housework. So, all right, well, anything, if we don't have anything else, then I think we can move on to chair reports. So, let's see, trustee Deluna, do you have any report that you would like to give to us?
I just wanted to mention and thank all the staff.
Oh, no.
It was unfortunate timing.
I was going to be thanking staff for the great IT connectivity and.
I'm sure that's exactly what she was saying. So if she, if she bounces back in.
She'll come back.
So trustee Rios, do you have a report?
I attended the Housing Forum. It was interesting to see, you know, some of the development and the planning that went on. I was at first, you know, when I was hearing questions from people, at first thinking, well, come on, we've covered all of this stuff before. But then I thought, actually, this is a really good thing, because there are still people out there that don't understand what's going on. And some of those basic questions that were being asked just served to educate, you know, more of those people that haven't followed this from the beginning and are just coming into it. So I thought, actually, by the end, I thought, well, this was great. I liked seeing the development, and it is a good thing that these people who were asking these questions, they were actually really good questions to help educate everybody else.
Thank you. All right, trustee Dodd, do you have a report?
I neglected to mention it before we're doing a subcommittee reports, but I, I did attend my first legislative subcommittee, which I, I enjoyed being on, and I, I did, I can just tell it's, it's a very, very good committee. And, you know, with Catherine and Holly, everyone's so prepared, putting together the documents and following up afterwards on some extra questions and other items for the trustees to track. And then, and trustee Goff chairing that committee, too, she's doing a great job and then and bringing a lot of great energy and enthusiasm, so I wanted to thank her as well.
Well, I will give trustee Goff an opportunity to, to.
To rebut that?
To rebuff her.
I, I always like to rebut. This is where I, I, I find out if trustee Dodd has the button to turn me off. And I, I, I just wanted to, you know, both the Legislative Committee and the McPherson who's teaching award committee have wonderful people on it, and I'm really looking forward to working with all of them this year. It's, you know, after we come off 2020, I think the people that I'm able to work with are very optimistic and ready to go. So I'm looking forward to working on both committees this year. Thank you.
All right, then, and trustee Iverson, do you have a report?
I do not have a report this evening.
All right, trustee Baldini, do you have a report?
Still muted.
Taking a shower? I hear water running.
That's the rain. The rain coming through. So, Madam Chair, I wanted to indulge you and, of course, the board secretary on, on item 13.1. So our action on that item was no action, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, well, given that and given 13.2, I, I would, would like to nominate myself for, for another try with the support of the Legislative Committee that, that, that we passed, if it's consistent with, with this evening's agenda.
I have no objection.
You'll have to have a motion to reconsider 13.1, which is fine.
Okay.
And just open it back up.
So I'd like to move that we open 13.1.
Back in.
So, and do we need to go through the roll call as well?
Consensus.
Okay, so, or can we do it by consensus? Okay, then, in that case, do we have, we had a motion to nominate him, so.
I would like to make a motion to nominate trustee Baldini for CT.
And I would second that nomination.
And we have a third, a fourth, and a fifth, yes, and, and, yeah, so. So let's see, okay, so trustee Deluna, do, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Okay.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Can't back out now. And let's see, student trustee Scholl.
Aye.
And then I will also support Mr. Baldini and that ever. And if there's anything that you, that we can do to assist you in, in that, please let us know and good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Let me make a quick comment as secretary. The note would be on 13.1, taking no action. We moved on to the agenda, reopened it, and then with a nomination for second in the vote, it's, it's proper and in order, so you can now move back, right?
And, thank you.
That is, that is my report, thank you.
That is your report, there, okay. Do, trust, student trustee Scholl, do you have a report?
I do. ASNBC set into motion an online event to celebrate Black History Month. We are allowing students to create art among the themes of representation, identity, and diversity in African-American culture. The winner will be, will receive a $100 gift card to wherever they would like. And the contest is lasting until February 21st. The contest will be highlighted in the Friday Extra that is going out tomorrow to all students. And we are also working with various humanity classes across campus to get more student participation. Also, I did attend the first Legislative Affairs meeting, and I'm looking very much forward to working with all of you, because that is what interests me. So I'm looking forward to working on that committee this year.
Very good, thank you. And hopefully we'll see some more of the Black History Month, maybe some of the submissions in Facebook and stuff. That would be awesome.
Yeah, the winners will be posted online on the various social media.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, well, um, do I have a report? I went to the Housing Forum as well, went to Real Property. I think I did other things that I'm now forgetting. I know I went to a couple of things with the, the CCLC conference and just going, mostly going through the board chair stuff. But actually, my favorite part of that was when they had the student representatives speaking. And because we, there was a lot of discussion from various administrators and faculty about just the response to COVID and, and, but it was really interesting to hear the perspective of students on that. And, and also just to kind of hear them reiterate somehow one of the major things that's come out of the response to the pandemic and just is, is that it's really kind of it's shown all of us, and this isn't just us and not just colleges, and it's just literally all of us where, where our strengths are and also where our weaknesses are. And so I think it'll be really interesting as we move forward into recovery to kind of hopefully repair some of the inequities and things that we have unearthed. Things like technology and access and things like that, that have really been problematic for a lot of our students. And then also figuring out what we can really capitalize on, what we've done really well and keep doing it even after things get back to whatever normal looks like. So I think that's all I have. At least, like I said, that's all I remember. It's been crazy, 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 crazy. I keep thinking next week will be easier. We'll see. All right, well, everybody take care of yourselves. It's been, we've had a couple of meltdowns in our house, and so I'm sure that's universal. Please refer to take care of yourself. It's very, very important. So then our next, we don't have anything to go back to closed session for. And our next meeting is going to be the 11th of March. So we can adjourn this meeting at 7:27 PM. Thank you very much, everyone. See you next night.
Thank you.